I'm ready.
Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, February ninth of 2021. This is the Stoughton City Council. The first order of business would be to call the roll call. Holly?
Horstmann.
Here.
Caravelo.
Here.
Doon.
Here.
Eileen.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Legaki. Mieski.
Here.
Reeves. Schumacher.
Here.
And Takovsky.
Here.
And was Alder Legaki here? I didn't hear that. And was Alder Legaki here? Okay, so Alders Legaki and Jensen and Reeves are absent and excused. Alder Legaki and Jensen and Reeves are absent.
Okay, thank you. We have communications. Are there any communications from council members?
I guess I have one. I just wanted to thank all the council members and community members, city staff and all the presenters for attending last Thursday's committee or committee of the whole meeting. I thought it was very informative and I thank Dr. Glenn, Director Glenn for putting it all together. So, thank you.
Any other communications from council members? I have a couple of quick ones. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge it is Black History Month and as part of that, I was asked to read a book for Key Gods of School. You might have saw the video. Others have done the same, including I know the library participated in that. So, it's a nice way for us to share our reading talents and learn a few things about those that have made differences in lives. So, I was glad to be part of that. We did receive an email or a phone call, Holly did, regarding Shakers. It sounds like they may appeal the decision. We'll keep you informed on what if any next steps there would be for us. And I just want to take a moment to thank the snow power operators at Public Works. The last few weeks have been very trying, a lot of snow, different types of storms. This last one was particularly difficult is, you know, just sliding around town with the cold and the ice and I know they continue to, you know, address situations as they're informed. So, if there's if there's slippery spots out there, please let us know and we'll be more than happy to take care of them. If we don't know about them, we can't take care of them. So, if anybody out there runs across anything, you can let the Public Works guys know. They'll be happy to take care of it. But otherwise, I just wanted to take a moment to thank them for their work. I know they put a lot of hours in in the last couple of weeks especially. That's all I had. One last chance for council members for communications. All right, we'll move on to the public comment. And I had two people that sent in requests and I'll read them quick. The first one is from Kathy Christman and this is regarding the Senior Center. As the pastor of the United Methodist Church here in Stoughton, I have a large populations of seniors in my congregation. When the church feels the most successful in the program, it is when they're as simple, well communicated and well, very well planned. It is when accommodations are made for all people to have the best experience possible. Programs and activities are successful when they meet the needs of the congregation that serve the best interest of the community. As I serve on a COA board, I've witnessed the conversation around acquiring of the annex. I believe this is the right decision for the best interests for the seniors. Having programs in one location allows for the greatest potential for participation. It will open doors for new programs for Stoughton's growing senior population. The Senior Center could potentially become a beacon for future residents who might want to call Stoughton their home in retirement. As more persons move to the community, it can only help all other avenues of business and civic programs. As a pastor, I'm excited about the opportunity for my congregational members who are active in the center's programs. I look forward to recommending the Senior Center in the future as programs grow. And the next one was from Louisa Havlick and this is also regarding the Senior Center and it reads, "I urge the Stoughton City Council to approve the termination of all the existing Senior Center lease agreements effective September 30th of 2021 and enter and revise agreements for all units from the period October 1st of 2021 through December 31st of 2022. Doing this will allow the Stoughton Senior Center to move forward in raising funds for remodeling the annex and eventually doing the work. The larger space will allow for more large group programs and activities that are needed for the senior citizens of our community. Some of the programs would include Tai Chi dance, balance classes, yoga, aerobic exercise and games. It would also provide space for larger presentations on topics such as Medicare, legal topics, travel and more. The senior population is growing in Stoughton. The current Senior Center has spaces for small groups, less than 10, and a dining area that doubles for some large group presentations. More spaces are needed. Some classes are currently held in spaces around the community, but these can be lost if the church or other organizations need their space. Since the city already owns the building, it's most cost-effective way to gain the needed space. I am not without sympathy for those who would be displaced, but there are several open spaces in the Harrah Plaza and along Main Street. The new contracts would give the occupants two years to move to a new location. I realize there'll be a loss of about $30,000 annually. I'm sure some of this could be regained through the rental space in the evenings or on the weekends when the seniors are not using it. Certainly is less expensive solution than building the new center. Thank you for listening." And then I had one person signed up to speak and that would be Jenny Britton. Are you available Jenny?
I am available. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
Thank you. So, this is also in response to the annex. So, I'm just going to read what I wrote down. So, my name is Jenny. I'm the owner of Blue Wing Physical Therapy. I rent half of Annex Suite Number One with Lisa Rush, Massage Therapist. I appreciate the due diligence the City Council and Finance Committee have given to the topic of increasing senior center space and accessibility. As a physical therapist, I really am for everybody exercising. And I also appreciate how much you guys have taken time in seeing how making that space successful with seniors will affect us small business owners in Stoughton. The proposal from the Finance Committee is to extend all tenant lease terms through September 2021 and then offer the extended lease option to all tenants through December 2022. At that time, the annex building is proposed to be turned over to the Senior Center for its space. I would like you to consider an alternative to turning the entire annex over to the Senior Center in 2022. I would ask you to consider turning over Suites Number One and Number Two to the Senior Center and leaving Suites Number Three and Number Four open for business. And I have four reasons why I think that's a great idea. Number one, the hair salon and financial office are longstanding businesses who have established themselves in the annex. They have shared ground space with the Senior Center for many years. Suite Three has been a hairstyling salon since late 70s and Thrive and Financial has been renting the space since 1991. Second reason, it's relatively easy to pick up my business as a physical therapist and also my coworker Lisa as a massage therapist is less easy for a hairstyling salon with its plumbing and construction for the individual stations to occur. Reason number three, Suites Number One and Two are the largest suites and when combined will open up a really nice exercise space for the seniors. Construction and use could start there and then future use could be determined at that time. Number four, the Senior Center can acquire the additional suites as those business owners retire. I don't want to speak for Stoughton Hairstyling or Thrive and Financial, but their year of retirement is certainly closer than mine is. In conclusion, I would like to ask the City Council to consider turning over Suites One and Two to the Senior Center and leave Suites Number Three and Four open for business. I feel this alternative proposition supports those business owners in the annex who need the most supporting. It also meets a felt need for the Stoughton seniors who will benefit from exercising in a location familiar to them. Thank you.
Thank you Jenny. All right, that takes us to the consent agenda. And I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, would anybody like something removed and acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. We're going into old business ordinance four of 2021. This is a second reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance four of 2021 and actually can somebody pop it up onto the screen?
Sure.
Then I can read it exactly and...
That's not it, wrong one. Sorry about that, I'm having a harder time finding that.
I know that it's a mending zoning code section 78-810 regarding feather flags, but I think there's something more specific in there.
There, we'll try that.
Ahah. This is ordinance four of 2021, amending zoning code section 78-810 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. And I so move.
For a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on this one, Alder Person Caravelo?
This is, as we discussed at last meeting, this is making the addition of what I referred to as feather flags, which are, I'm sure people are familiar with, they're about three feet wide, approximately five to six feet tall. Making provision though, adding provision for those into our zoning code.
Any questions or comments from council members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion does carry. Next item is new business, resolution 13 of 2021. This one is coming from Park and Recreation, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is resolution 13 of 2021, accepting the ADA Audit and Transition Plan completed by MSA Professional Services. And I so move.
For a second, there's a second, Alder Person Caravelo.
This is, essentially as it says, the MSA Professional Services did a ADA audit for city parks. And it looked, the plan looked good. I'm sure if there are any other questions, I believe as Regina referred to him, Dr. Glenn, Plan Director or Parking, Park and Rec Director Glenn is available if there are any questions. Or I don't know if Dan wants to speak to this?
Yeah, I can speak to it. So, I'll start off, the ADA is civil rights law enforced by the Justice Department. And the law really prohibits discrimination against people with disabilities and Title II specifically of the ADA addresses making public services accessible to those with disabilities and that applies to municipalities. So, in 2020, in the CIP, it was funded to hire a consultant to do an ADA transition plan and we hired MSA to complete that. This was really done to reach a goal line in our 2018 corp, which was to ensure that communities existing open space and recreational facilities programs were designed to meet the special needs of all residents regardless of their ability levels. So, really to complete the plan, MSA conducted audits of the city's parks and they recorded the deficiencies and we have like a spreadsheet and GIS system actually of a map of the different deficiencies where we could pull it up and look at it specifically. And then once they completed the audit, we worked, they worked with myself to decide the priorities of improvements. So, the first priority was the maintenance and these are really low hanging fruit that could be accomplished with little to no expense. So, things like you know, toilet paper or not toilet paper rolls, but like, say like hand dryers and things like that. They're not like the right height. They had to be adjusted by like an inch or two to become compliant with the law. Then our second priority was providing accessible roads into around the facilities. So, things like basketball courts, playgrounds, there's a lot of roads that are missing, these types of facilities inside the parks. So, I work with Director Abear and Pec Room really on that and we actually budgeted $30,000 in this year CIP for the roads. And we'll be making some progress towards the compliance of those this summer. And the next level of prioritization was improving facilities that are most heavily used. So, things like racetrack park, you know, rotary park, things that parks in our park system that get used a lot. And really the last category of the priorities is major infrastructure replacement. So, we have a lot of stuff aging out in the park system. So, when they, it doesn't make sense to do a lot of like improvements based around like a park shelter that might be needing replacement in five to six years. So, in our, the plan, you'll see that, you know, when park shelter gets replaced, we're going to address a lot of the deficiencies surrounding that. So, one of the things to keep in mind though is this transition plan, this document's dynamic and changes throughout the years. So, we just really need to show progress towards the compliance, but it could probably be done on increments feasible to the city. So, if we have a lean budget year, maybe we budget less money but we're still making progress towards the compliance and that's that's in, that's in good sta, you stay in good standing with like the Department of Justice if you can show that progress. So, this is a quick overview. I didn't put a presentation together. I'm a little have presentation at this point, so.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this one? All right. Go ahead, Alder Mieski.
I just want to say I'm very happy to see that this, this plan has finally showed up for about 30 years behind from what the ADA original law I asked for. And in trying to get the city to start complying with ADA, especially in the Parks and Recreation Section, since I've been on council. So, I'm glad to see that we're finally doing something about it before we got sued.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And anybody opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is our 14 of 2021 and that one is coming from the, went through the Finance Committee and earlier it was that Park and Rec, but we'll, we'll go with Finance, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you Mayor. Resolution 14, 2021, authorize the Parks and Rec Director to accept the bid and bid alternative from Speedway Sand and Gravel for Rotary Park improvements and use the Park Development Funds not to exceed $90,000 to cover the funding gap. And so moved.
For a second, there's a second. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, so this said come through both Park and Rec Committee and Finance Committee, both were unanimous approvals. This is for improvements in the Rotary Park, that would be parking lot to that park, accessibility pathways, restrooms, landscaping, a bunch of things. But the project will run a bit over budget as they were looking at soil issues that would prevent proper foundations to be, to be built without being shored up a little bit. So, the monies out of the Park Development Fund are partly to, to go for that. And I think Director Glenn, you want to take another run at anything other than what we, I mean, we've already looked at Rotary Park improvement things, but maybe to touch on a little bit more about what these soil inefficiencies were.
Sure, so I'll just start off with the project entails a prefab restroom and then the exterior would look like the fire station. They can match the brick pretty close. Accessible pathways and sort of goes back to the ADA transition plan. You have to have an accessible road to a restroom. Parking lot improvements at Opera House and connecting those, that parking lot to Main Street and then through to the park and then a route down from the top of the hill that'd be accessible to the restroom as well. And additional landscaping, like everybody knows the drainage rocks that are there, that'd be all cleaned up. So, at the time when the, the original budget for this project was put together, engineer did it and we weren't sure where the utilities were located at the road for the restroom and also the the soils. We, you know, we had the geotech and the rest of the engineering completed in the winter and then through the spring of last year. And then like Alder Schum, Alderman Schumacher just mentioned, there's poor soils found and where the location of the restroom would be placed. And it'd also include a very tricky excavation job based on where the utilities were located. So, after the additional engineering work was completed, the probable opinion costs for that went up substantially just for the restroom, which with the base bed would be 192. That included a 15% contingency and that was over the original budget amount because of those two items. So, at the time, we decided to bid the project anyways and it went over bid last June. And the low base bid at the time was a little over 213,000 and then the little bit with alternative was 302. So, at the time of the year, the bid timing, it was, it was pretty late in the season to sign a deal. A lot of the contractors were already full and we only received two bids. So, I wasn't really sure how to adjust the budget at that time to include the additional amount for this 2021, this year's budget. So, I just increased it, the updated engineer's estimate and added that into this 2021 budget. So, we were pretty confident that we could get it for that price. Then we rebid it this winter and then the, the results, the low base bid was 213 and then the little bit with alternate included was 275. So, really rebidding the project reduced the total project cost by 27,000 if you want to look at the alternate included in there. And that's why we originally really wanted to get done. We wanted to get the park looking really good. So, they really left the, the project on roughly $90,000 over budget because we still needed to do things like we have electric, electric locks in all the restrooms in the city, the parks, so they can set to a timer. And, you know, just other amenities as far as like trash cans and things like that we self-purchased. So, you know, I talked to Director Friedel about what was in the Park Development Fund and as of January 1st, there was 130,000 in there for park improvements that were undesigned needed. So, we could easily cash flow the extra $90,000 by utilizing the Park Development Funds. So, in really, I believe it's a good use of the funds really because of the use of the park. I looked through our corp, it's the third most used park, park according to our survey where we had over 1,000 respondents. And restrooms are also identified as one of the top needs for our park system. And then, you know, I never mentioned, it's also, this project's also a partnership with Rotary Club and they raised $70,000 for it and there's additional small donations totaling 3,500. So, a total of 74,500 has been fundraised for the project.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight is R15 of 2021. This one came through the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R15, 2021, a resolution authorizing the proper city official to terminate existing Senior Center lease agreements effective September 30th, 2021 and enter into revised agreements for all units for the period from October 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, we devoted a, a large amount of time in order to discuss all of the intricacies that, that go into just this stage of, of this project. This was about the, the best that, that we can do because we know that there are, there are either a lot of people who where there are people who will be affected in this one and there are people who would have loss of, of things that they would be able to do within the Senior Center. This was, this was a difficult thing to go through with this, but that's what we're here for, to go through the difficult process. And this, this is just one stage of, of the project. That is about all I've got on that.
All right, any questions or comments? I know Director Glenn is here, McGlynn is here as well.
I have a question.
Comment?
Okay, I have President Hirsch and then Alder Person Mieski.
Sure. My comment is that I'm glad that you're, you're working through this. It's a great improvement from when it first came out. And I commend everybody for working on that. Second, in light of what two of our community members talked today. And I know Director Glenn, you're looking for funding and all that for the Senior Center. If, you know, are you looking, because I haven't had the opportunity to go through all this. Are you looking to change everything over immediately or in phases that you could possibly start with Suites One and Two and then move on to Three and Four later on or are your grants that you're applying for would take the whole annex all at once?
Right, when we discussed in finance, the two-year period of time would give us the time to fundraise for the $150,000 to remodel the whole space.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Alder Person Mieski.
Yeah, you know, I, I support the Senior Center and it has, it serves the community well. However, we also have five viable businesses that are in that building and we have to remember that the reason that the city bought that, the, the, the only reason the city bought that complex in the first place originally was because of the fact that they had the annex for as a revenue generating source. I'm concerned about the loss of revenue that we are going to have from the loss of rental and, you know, Director Friedel. Director Friedle had said in his memo that, you know, not a problem, we'll just take it out, we'll shift it from here to there. Well, it is a problem because in end of the day, it shorts us forty-five thousand dollars and I want to know when, you know, let's remember that we, and that comes from general, that goes to general fund or whatever. Budget time comes around and we have staff leadership applying for positions. We have fights about capital budget because we are short on money because we are borrowing up our, up the, to our eyes. You know, and now we're talking about, we're going to remove five viable businesses from the downtown area. We are going to lose forty-five thousand dollars a year. And that then eventually with that also comes the fact that the building will have to be maintained and we won't have the monies being generated for that. And there will be more staff because there will be more programs and everything else that was on with it avalanche effect. Some ways that's good, but I also see the bad part of this. You know, the, the city has a track record in supporting our small businesses. It's, yeah, I look back on it and I think about, and I talked to some people, you know, when we redid the downtown area, took us two years, we lost a bunch of businesses that way. We didn't seem to really, as, as the city government, do much to help with that. And now we are going to take five businesses, which I've said that, you know, this is a vital spot for them, especially the, the, the two businesses that should have been there for a number of years and are well-established and add variety to our downtown so that we're not just a bunch of gift shops and restaurants. So I have concerns. I have a real hard time with supporting this right the way it is right now without looking at, you know, at the, at the senior center with its with our scheduling and and efficiencies and also the fact that we now have a a very generous offer for two businesses to fall on the sword to have that that plan come, come to fruition. So that may need to be a little revision there. So at this point in time, I, I can't support this.
Tim, am I allowed to clarify?
Sure, and then I, I think I see Joyce's hand up.
Whenever, whenever you want me to, that's fine, go ahead.
Yes, Cindy, go ahead. I'll, I'll second.
And then we'll, after Cindy, we'll go Alder Person Tokowski and then Alder Person Borzma.
I just wanted to clarify and Jamin, if you could help me with that, I believe it's not forty-five thousand dollars. I believe it's thirty and it doesn't go into the general fund. I believe it goes into building maintenance. Correct?
That's correct. The rental revenue is thirty thousand and in terms of the lost revenue in the memo, it's not that we're saying, well, it's no problem. It was just basically the best we could come up with.
But it does not go in the, to the general fund?
In a roundabout way, it does because we transfer in excess at the end of the year. And the proposal in the memo was the best way to make sure that the general fund wasn't impacted.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alright, Alder Person Tokowski.
I just wanted to mention a, a point that I hadn't heard anybody speak to yet. I, I could be mistaken. And that is the people who use the senior center. There's a different element, you know, as we were talking about other buildings, it seems like all of us could pop in our cars and we could go to another building and it wouldn't be a big deal, but with seniors, first of all, they're, especially in anxious times like the pandemic, there's a disruption of schedules. There's a disruption of their transport, you know, their normal transportation arrangements that would have to be revised. And I guess the, the other thing is that I really think the seniors feel most secure when they have the whole staff of the senior center available to them. So I just wanted to mention that so that it could be folded into thinking really as part of the research.
Okay, Alder Person Borzma.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree that this has been an issue for quite a long time. I, I'm on the commission as well. I believe that the long-term tenants would have a very difficult time moving to a different spot. They've been our tenants for a number of years at this point, so I do offer an amendment to this proposal or this resolution and that would be that we turn over the two, the two suites of the annex, I believe that's one and two, to the senior center effective September twenty or thirty twenty twenty-one. And we'll allow the other two tenants to continue to have a lease there and allow them to renew their leases yearly. And this allows the, the center to to begin fundraising, maybe not as quite as much as they need, they would need if they had all of them. That allows us to keep, keep that, keep some revenue coming flowing in. And I think it, I think it would be a nice compromise. And so that's, that's my amendment to this proposal or resolution. And I hope that was clear.
I just want to clarify the date said, I thought I heard you say September twenty twenty-one. And what we were proposing is to extend that date until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I, I thought I heard Jenny saying that they could give it up earlier, but I, I may have misheard her. So I guess I, I guess I was trying to take notes while she was talking. But I think that I, I would go for either one. I mean, if it's, if, if they, if we want to give them additional time, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that the senior center can raise the funds by that time anyway, so. But I, but I, I think that that would be a great compromise. If, if that would work out for the December date, that's fine for me too. I it really doesn't matter. I just think that the two tenants, which is both the agency and also the hairstylist would have the most difficulty coming up with a different place to go and I, I just don't want to lose them in our community. They're two very viable businesses and so I, I would be fine for the December date. But I, but I really do think we should allow them to stay for a while and, and if they want to continue to renew their leases yearly, they have that option. Things may change in the future, but I think to allow them, those two to stay in, I think would be, would be a great compromise and I.
Okay, well, let me break the rule and just ask Jenny, maybe I misunderstood.
No, we would prefer to stay until twenty twenty-two. That would give us some time to check other options. We'd like to stay as long as we could, but we understand the need for the use of space too.
Okay, so the motion would be for December third, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Clarify what the motion is?
Yeah, Holly, did you catch it?
So the motion would be to extend the leases until December twenty twenty-two and turn over suites one and two to the senior center at that time and keep the rental agreements with suite, suites three and four.
Alright, did everybody understand the motion or the amendment? And are there any questions or comments?
Oh.
Alder Person.
I.
I saw Jean going first. She can, she can.
Thanks, Ben. Um, Director McGlynn and Finance Committee. This is a very difficult decision. And in the Finance Committee meetings and or Director McGlynn prior to tonight's meeting, this phased approach that was put out there and now is this amendment. Was that explored in committee or before this meeting?
It was mentioned in committee. I don't know by who. Would you like my response to that?
Absolutely, and, and looking forward to detail from committee members as well.
Well, I'll refer to Brett first.
So I, we did talk about that and as Director McGlynn was in, in her presentation saying that it is it's easier to do all of the construction at one time rather than to have multiple incident like, you know, you think of like trip charges for plumbers or something like that rather than doing it in, in a staggered approach in there to, to have all of the construction and to design the entire area as a whole rather than part by part. So we did talk about that, but we said, and it's, it's okay, but there, there are definitely pros and cons to doing construction at a phased approach.
And I would, I would concur. I think if we have to, the cost of remodel is certainly going to be much different. You know, we have an amount right now for the whole space. If we have to chop that up, the second phase is going to be much more expensive at that point. And then we have to fundraise again. It's, it's difficult to fundraise for different things as, you know, as you cut them up. So obviously it would be easier for us to fundraise all at once and do all of the construction at once.
Are there any other questions or comments on the amendment? Ben had his hand up at one point.
That, that exchange kind of covered what I was going to ask. Thank you.
Okay, President Hirsch.
I just have, you know, just for clarification, Director McGlynn, can you just tell me what your vision briefly is for the annexation? I know you talked about it, but there's been so many different meetings.
Sure.
I mean, clear.
Yeah, absolutely. The plan is to take that whole space and make two large programming rooms mostly for wellness activities, classes that can take more than, you know, fifteen, twenty people at a time. So the, the whole annex would be broken up into two spaces, again, having to redo bathrooms, ADA, you know, those, those kind of things for both of those spaces.
Do you anticipate being able, I'm just trying to think of revenue generation like after our renting those spaces out for park and racks or other community needs to kind of have other units of revenue?
Yeah, I would think you would be able to rent those out. We've had, you know, forever, you know, the community has rented out space that the city has. You know, all you have to do is take a look at the schedule for the EMS or the fire training room and it is busy all the time. So you have people using that space and I would think these two spaces would again be very much used in the same way.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think the most logical place for expansion for the senior center has to be the annex because of the ability for staff to, you know, function in both buildings without having to travel distances back and forth. I do think that giving everyone nearly two years to still have their sites of business in the annex is quite a good amount of lead time to look for a new place. I understand it's not easy and if it was me, I would feel very bad about having to move. But from the numbers that I saw in Finance Committee, the people that have been renting there, the businesses renting there have been getting a bit of a discount and have really been assisted over the years and one of the sad realities about renting is if you don't own, you may be asked to leave. So it, for me, giving them as businesses until the end of twenty twenty-two should be sufficient and I think that the space in the annex is the clear and likely future for the senior center. So even though it could be phased in and give the third and fourth suite a little extra time, certainly I wouldn't be offended if the third and fourth suite were, you know, also expected to leave by the end of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and for clarification, I believe the amendment is on the table. Holly, can you read it again?
Sure, so the, the amendment was to turn over suites one and two at the end of twenty twenty-two and keep the rental agreements with suites three and four.
Alright. Eight last questions or comments on the amendment. Alder Person Legaki.
Thank you. I work with aging populations frequently during the day and this is a difficult decision, but I, I think it's very wise for us as a community to keep investing in our seniors. The numbers of people who are aging and the needs are increasing greatly and I just would like to note, I think it is very generous that we're going to give until twenty twenty-two. And if the senior center were not to be reaching their goals at any point, I, I don't think that, I mean, I, I would think that that would be considered and, and perhaps the timing, but I, I think we have to invest in our seniors at the negative impact on valued small businesses. These are very hard times, but I, I think the greater good does stand with our seniors with the silver tsunami and the very many numbers coming. That's, that impressed me about Stone. I think that we do invest in our seniors and we have very unique communities. I think this is the right thing to do. So I'm going to say no on this amendment.
Okay. Alright. Anybody else? Alright, so we're, we're voting on the amendment. So all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed to the amendment?
No.
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 So it sounds like the no's have it. That would take us back to the original motion. And any questions or comments on the original motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
That motion does carry. Alright, thank you. I know that wasn't easy for anybody, but I guess that's what we get elected to do. Next item is R sixteen of twenty twenty-one. And this one here is coming from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher.
Alright, R sixteen of twenty twenty-one resolution authorizing proper city official to engage the Canadian law firm of Castles Brock and Blackwell LLP to assist the city with navigating the Canadian Companies Creditors Arrangement Act as it pertains to North American Fur Auctions Incorporated. So moved.
Second. I heard a second. Alder. I heard a second. All the person Schumacher?
All right, so this is. Because the bankruptcy was done in within Canada. See Attorney Dragney was talking about not fully understanding how this. The Creditors Arrangement Act works in Canada. The thought was to keep a legal, a Canadian legal firm on retainer. So that they would be able to a little bit more easily navigate through the the Canadian equivalent of bankruptcy. Without them, without their law firm having to become instant experts in international law.
All right, anything you want to add, Attorney Dragney?
Just a. So. Nafa is a part of to a contract with the city that requires Nafa to guarantee certain levels of tax revenue. And. That company has made good on its guarantee obligation to date. But now that they have taken advantage of the protections under Canadians. The the Canadian Companies Creditors Arrangement Act. The question has arisen, how we can operate going forward, whether we can continue to invoice them. For payments that will become due to the city or not. And there may be additional questions that we need to deal with as this project moves or process moves forward. So that's the context, and this law firm is a one that has the qualifications to to provide the. Expertise on Canadian law that we may need.
All right, are there any questions or comments on this one?
Can we get an idea of the amount? I know it's not certain, but the amount of money we would be looking for from Nafa?
Jamin, if he's on, can tell you what what he anticipates invoicing them for this year. Think?
The agreement is over the life of the Tiff district, so in excess of twenty years at this point remaining. This year's invoice would be right around fifty thousand dollars, and then the following year it would jump up to eighty thousand dollars annually. So it's. It's something that's not going to go away, and we need to get an answer for because it's it if we are allowed to invoice this, we should definitely pursue it.
Any other questions or comments?
No question.
Go ahead.
This is related, but may not be exactly the same. When city council. Gave North American Fur its land agreement within the Tiff. Which President Hirsch, to her credit. Read the future and said basically that they weren't going to be around, but we went ahead and did it anyway. We gave them ten acres of land. Is that correct?
That was part of the purchase agreement.
So of that, they only use approximately what? Three?
Give or take, I'm not really sure off the top of my head. I'd ask Rodney, but I don't know if he's, oh, maybe he is on there. I I know he's trying to get some heat down at the senior center right now.
Well. Anyway, so we have, we basically have like seven acres, seven acres of land that was never used for intended purposes. Is there any way of reclaiming that?
So there's nothing in the existing agreement that that I recall that creates, you know, an obligation on their part to. Convey any of that land back to the city. However, it's my understanding that they do have the land listed on the market. They are looking to sell it. And so. I guess my hope is that we will be presented with an opportunity to work with whoever the buyer is on. A relationship moving forward and the opportunity to address. Both the guarantee obligation and how that's going to be managed and also potentially address. How to make sure that that land is used to its potential. But I I don't, we don't have a way at this point to kind of force. A return of that land to the city.
May I ask another question?
Sure.
So if. The company does not need its obligation for. What what we are seeking in in lieu in in payment. Does that, does that null and void the agreement that we have with them?
Not necessarily. We are an unsecured creditor. We sold, the city sold land to Nafa. Part of the purchase agreement included a. Guarantee of tax revenue. That guarantee obligation is unsecured, so so that contractual obligation remains. Exactly how. That contractual obligation will play out over time is yet to be seen, and again. They have sought protection under the, what what I understand to be the Canadian equivalent of of bankruptcy law. So I can't say today exactly how. Their obligations to the city are going to be treated in that context or how this is going to play out.
And I would just add that all the negotiations we've done. Since then, we've we've secured some sort of a letter of credit or a secured guarantee to prevent this from happening on other. Sales that we've, you know, been involved in. So there's a huge lesson learned here. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. Next item is. R eighteen of 2021. This one also came through finance. All the person Schumacher.
All right, R eighteen of 2021 resolution authorizing the redevelopment authority. Of the city of Stone to utilize up to twenty five hundred dollars in 2021 contingency funding. To cover the application costs associated with up to four hundred thousand in grant opportunities. So moved.
There's a second. All the person Schumacher?
All right, so there with these couple of grant proposals that are outlined in in the information. That we had attached to the resolution. Providing up to the four hundred thousand dollars in potential funding for the redevelopment efforts. The RDA did not have it in their funding in their budget to cover the twenty five hundred dollars that would be utilized in. Preparing these grant applications. That is about all I've got on that.
All right, this also came through the RDA. Is there anything you wanted to add, President Hirsch or Ozzy?
Go ahead, Ozzy.
I don't have anything to add to it. I guess I think Brett did a good job of explaining what it's for.
Yeah, there's just a number of, as you can see in the packet, there's just a number of grants that we can apply for that are for big amounts of money. Add again to offset the costs at the RDA site with the respect to the power house and showing up shoreline and other. Buildings along Main Street, and it's a great opportunity, and obviously Gary's very. Well. He's a great person to write these for us. We're very lucky to have them.
So this proposal covers everything from working on with some local businesses that might acquire a building and remodel it. To working with the school district on their fab lab model that they want to do. So there's a variety of things that we could apply for as well as some of the riverfront type work. That is a a good investment. Any questions or comments on this one?
Mayor?
Go ahead, I'll I'll ask you.
What is the balance of our contingency fund?
I don't believe we've tapped into it at all this year. I'd let Brett or Jamin, we didn't have a finance committee meeting tonight, so. I don't have the recent numbers in front of me.
Yeah, we haven't tapped into the twenty one budget at all, but we did budget a hundred thousand.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? During, all the person Lagaki?
As I've come on the council in the last two years, I've noticed that there's a lot of grants being sought. Particularly through Parks and Rec, and I think Dan Glenn has done a great job in trying to secure those. This, so this proposal is is wider than just projects of the RDA. And I just wonder, have we looked at all of the resources available within the city to seek? These grants and. I'm sure Gary Beck, I I I'm sure he's very qualified and probably could help. It may be a good investment, but I I haven't spoken. I I'm just wondering, are there other city resources available?
I I would say that a lot of the grant opportunities. The general ones that come from either the county or the state or even the federal government. Typically, I'll get an email, and then I forward that email amongst our leadership team. And they tend to go in there and write grants for things that are specific to their department. And, you know, some examples of grants we've written for and worked with are especially like on phosphorus. Removal of some of our equipment. And certainly whenever we apply for these grants, there's certain expectations as far as frequency of street sweeping, for example, and those types of things. I know that Director Sheil was able to secure some grants for the bioswale last year, you might recall. So each department, you know, goes after the grants that are specific to their needs. I know the library, you know, taps into grants as well. And the senior center gets a lot of money through the county. You know, I sign those often with Cindy. So I I think we do a pretty good job. Gary just has a different. Different resources. He goes after the different type of grants that maybe aren't as widely known. And he does a really good job of, you know, working with Stone. I know on the riverfront alone, he's helped secure. Approximately eight hundred thousand dollars worth of grants between him and Dan and the RDA, so I think that. This is a really good, you know, return on our investment.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next item is. Item number eleven, which is R nineteen to 2021. And you might recall, this was here at the last meeting, we had the presentation. From Bob Dvorak and his team regarding Fifty One West. And we're here tonight to consider the resolution. I guess to start with, I would just entertain a motion for the resolution, and then we can get into a discussion if you'd like.
Howard, I would move to go forward with the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any questions right off the bat? I know Bob and his team are here to answer questions. We we didn't feel we needed another formal presentation. I thought they covered it pretty well two weeks ago. But there's anything in specific that you want to follow up on, feel free to do so. A lot of silence. Oh, go ahead.
I kind of have forgotten some of the numbers, but I was wondering if Bob could. Remind us of the increment increase in value on the east side of the highway and then also the amount on the west side. By his projections.
Jason, do you have those numbers in front of you there by chance?
I believe I do. Or I can can estimate it. We hadn't actually run that subtitle.
Is this what you're looking for?
It is.
I thought it was, I thought it was about seventeen million for the east side, if I remember right.
Yeah, so it's actually. Yeah, that's. That's probably effective. This one, that one shows the 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 timing, and so it kind of blends things together. If you look at. Page, my page numbers are off. Move to the next page, the one without color. Keep going again. This one shows parcel by parcel. What the values are and the, it's the end of those that have values there, so. I believe that's parcels eighteen through twenty three that are on the east side. And so that's. Roughly. Fourteen fourteen fifty million, and then the balance of the projected fifty three fifty four million in increment is on the west side.
So what you're looking for, all the person?
Yep, that's very good. Thank you. Forty million on one side, fourteen on the other.
Yep, about that, correct.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor?
All the person may ask you, go ahead.
I don't have a, I don't have a question per se. I just have basically more of a statement. This was, you know, I I'm not against this project at all. You know, it's part of extending out the. The city limit. It's 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 somewhat logical. However, you know. My fear was with Kettle West is now coming to fruition now and in the future. We are tipping out greenfield developments. Subsidizing development when, you know, I'm sorry that developers are buying purchasing land that is. As problems, but you know, that's something that they should have thought about when before they purchased it. You know, I I just I just see us going down this down this rabbit hole, the city. Another tip, how many tips do we have now? This is number what?
This would be number nine, although some of them have closed.
Yeah, and and, you know, I've been looking at some of the other tips, and they have some pretty dismal financial. Forecasting on them, you know, we gotta be pushing money around to just so that we don't keep going under. This one probably won't be that way because of the fact that it's, you know. Brand new retail. But. I'm not necessarily for new tips in in greenfield development in general, and like I said. Yeah, there are some extenuating circumstances on this. The soils aren't. What they're supposed to be, but you know. That shouldn't be on the developer to figure that out before they purchase it and not rely on the city to help them with. Some of these. Some of these issues. I didn't I didn't see Starbucks asking us for. For a Tiff so that they could get their parking lot redone. I had, I'm just having problems with adding more tips all the time to the, to the city and, and the financial burdens that go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, any other comments or questions?
Can you just clarify again? And I know we went over this a couple of weeks ago. And maybe either you, mayor, or, you know, Bob or Jill, who's on the line too, talk about, or even Rodney, I don't know who wants to take this, talk about the, the actual why they're asking for TIF. It's, it's because of the cost of things that we're asking them to put in in this new development. If I'm not mistaken, with respect to utilities and, and stormwater drainage and sewer, is that correct? Is that why it's, it's costing more than what they had anticipated because of our regulations? Or could you just explain that again?
Sure. Um, I mean, I could start and, and pass it on to Bob. But basically, um, when we started working on this and you saw the map earlier, we've done some revisions to it to try to improve the park and the trail use and make sure we get the full park dedication. And really during the process, um, we discovered that the stormwater needs to be held on site. And I guess Rodney could probably explain that part better than I can. But between that and, and the, the parkland dedication really took up a large chunk of the land. And then we also discovered through Stoughton Utilities and Jill can touch on that, that the sanitary, sanitary sewer line was nearing its capacity. And we were concerned that if, once all these new buildings were put online, we might be at risk for a sewer backup. So we, we would like to see that sanitary sewer go from an eight inch line to an inch line. And then also on the water, we'd like to have the water mains looped. So if there's a, a water main break, we can revert the water and restore water to the neighborhood relatively quickly instead of having a long outage. So that's, those are some of the, kind of the big ticket costs. And I guess I'd start with Bob, if you want to talk about the stormwater.
Sure. Um, what we found out early on working with the city, Rodney and staff there is there's some deficiencies in Virgin Lake outlet and Paradise Pond outlets, which is requiring a hundred percent stay on storm design. And that's what we accomplished through, through the support with MSA and, and, and that whole process. And in turn, between Parks and the storm, we lost about a third of, a third of the acreage, which is no problem of, or no, no fault of anybody's, just a requirement we had to go by. And then due to the, uh, um, looping of that water main, that requires about eight hundred feet of ten inch water main running through the town of Rutland down Oak Opening Drive to tie into KPW. And, and that's what, between that and the, and the, um, sanitary deficiency on Roby Road, that's what's getting this project upside down.
And, you know, I would just add that this, this request was something that was brought just a short time ago. We've had discussions with Bob for well over a year now. And there's never really been a hint of, of needing a TIF request until we kind of went through the process and unearthed all these issues. So it was only recently that, you know, we all learned that in order for this project to move forward, there was going to be a need for assistance. Is there anything you wanted to add, Rodney?
I think you've captured it well. Um, the stormwater situation is it's essentially served by closed kettle. I don't know if the, the Paradise Pond and the Virgin Lake are considered deficiencies, but they're certainly closed basins. And there's not a, a quality overflow outlet for them. And that requires the stay on requirements that Bob spoke of. Certainly their logical development is, is unfortunate because we're adjacent to the town, the developed town portion of land. So the water main, it has to go through the developed town portion of Oak Opening Drive. It is somewhat an unfortunate situation, but certainly necessary to create the water looping and fire flows that are appropriate for this development. There's also a, an additional cost to cross Highway 51 with the water main. So there are some unique situations, if you will, related to this site. And I think the numbers bear out why, why there would be a need for public assistance to make this a, a successful project. And help public assistance in the TIF program, really TIF is really the only tool that the city has available to, to a development such as this to offer an opportunity to see this type of range of housing also be brought into the city. You're looking at some multifamily, you're looking at some lower density, you're looking at several different housing types as well as commercial areas. So I think this offers a lot of positive aspects. And I know that there's a great deal of effort put together with the Parks and Rec group to work through the park configuration and the trail system. So I, I think it's been a homegrown project to some degree with a lot of fingerprints from the various groups participating in that, in that process.
And anything you'd like to add, Joe, from the utilities perspective?
I really don't. I think that everybody captured that very well. It's the sanitary sewer capacity issue that we have. It presently doesn't have a capacity issue, but once you place this development into that sanitary sewer section, we would be above capacity. So that would need to be upsized. A development of this size as well, we would need the looping of the water main to provide like Rodney had touched upon, the fire flows and as the mayor touched upon, to make sure that we've got that redundancy so that significant number of people wouldn't be out of water. So I think everybody did a nice job of capturing the utilities concerns.
Yeah, and, you know, one thing I would say about working with Bob is I really appreciate the fact that he's been willing to work with us. He gave up some additional units so we could make sure we met the parkland requirement, worked with us through Park and Rec on the trail system. Originally, we had, you know, some dead end roads. We worked to take them out to make it easier for our public works guys. So we think, you know, from, uh, you know, from a layout point of view, it, it actually, it turned out really well for us. And as Rodney mentioned, there's quite a few different housing options, um, which is, which is nice. We normally don't see that in our developments. It's usually pretty much all of one type. This has a nice mix of everything as well as potential for the retail. It could be one big unit or it could be multiple units. That hasn't really been determined yet. So, you know, overall, I, you know, I think Bob and his team and MSA has done a really, you know, a nice job of listening to our concerns. Um, having said that, are there any questions or comments from Alders?
I just have one, Your Honor, if I could.
Go ahead, all in person.
Yeah, uh, the, these developments, as everybody knows, are really tricky when you're, when you're anticipating a, a project and then come up with things that really need to be done. And I am relative, I'm really pleased that the city and, and the developer are working together on this because we want a really sound project. And I think the loop is really a, really an important part of that and, um, you know, the, of the water lines. So some of these possibly could have been anticipated, these costs. But, um, you know, as I, if I, as I hear and read about this project, a lot of that stuff, how could you possibly anticipate some of the stuff that Bob has run into? So I think it's all legitimate and I think it's, uh, I think it, it looks to me like a really good project for that part of the city. And, and that was why I proposed to, uh, to go forward with this resolution.
And basically the resolution is really to give the staff the direction to continue to work with Bob to ultimately, you know, put together a developers agreement, which would include a formal TIF request. So, you know, the council will have plenty of more looks at it. There's quite a few processes to go through. Rodney could probably rattle them off quicker than I could.
Well, you, you're certainly going to have an urban service area amendment. You're going to have a preliminary plat, a final plat, rezoning. So you have a number of steps that, you, you know, obviously this is a step anticipating it moving forward. If this, if this passes, but certainly there's other refinements that get reviewed at each one of those steps going forward.
Any other questions or comments? Here and none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Want to pose? Okay, uh, that motion does carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, you bet. Next two items are coming from CACP. And that would be all the person highly.
Yep, so this first one, our 202021 is changing up the order of business in our council rules. This puts a public comment before communications from Alders. We've, uh, we've, we've had this come up several times in our meetings that, while public comment is not a back and forth discussion in our debate, this change would give Alders the ability to constructively respond to, public comment in the scope of that meeting. This came up in, uh, the same discussion as our previous rule. Change the, uh, change to public comment format, allowing digital comment. And I will move to approve.
Sir, a second? All right, there's a second. All right, anything else? Anybody wants to add? There are none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. Next item comes from CACP and this is all their, all the person highly's brainstorming.
Thank you. Um, so this is our 21 of 2021, adopting an application for mayoral appointees to committees, commissions and boards. This is a pretty important thing in terms of making our, making our process more transparent and having some, some sort of a paper trail on the process. Allowing the public to see, uh, who has applied and why we're thinking that they're a good fit for the, for the committee or board. And this is a, a piece of paper that we could, you know, have in the packets for Alders to, uh, review beforehand. I will move to approve this as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. And I would just add that this really doesn't change the process. The ordinance will still say the mayor will appoint and the council will confirm. But I think this will certainly help me, you know, in my recruiting effort and hopefully encourage, you know, more diversity on our committees and participation and, and bring out some people that might have some expertise in these areas that I'm not aware of. So I view this as a really positive direction to go.
Yeah, I just have a question and that is, and that's probably for Alder highly. So the, so what would happen then is I understand it is that the mayor, there, there may be some people that would go to the mayor to say, I would like to be on a committee. And some that the mayor has kind of eaten the bushes to get on the committee. And at what point then, I would assume after there's some, some desire on either part, they have that person on a committee that, then they would fill out, personally fill out the, the form requesting to be on the committee. So it, it could be generated by the mayor, mayor's initial involvement. Or it could be made, it would, could be produced by the person applying for a committee assignment. Is that correct?
That's right. And I think the idea was to have this posted on the city website so that it's available. Even if there isn't, you know, a, a committee vacancy at the moment, if someone is looking for ways to get involved, they could put those, put that in and we can have it on file for the next time there's a vacancy.
Yeah, that's correct. And we wanted to get this done before we reorganize in April so we can get it out there. And we're also, the committee's also looking at possibly adding community members to five of the six standing committees as well. So if, you'll probably be seeing that next month. And if that goes through, then we're going to be needing some more volunteers to serve. So this is one of the tools we can use to recruit.
And can I have one more comment, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
The, on the, this is very similar to what the library board, I was on for a while. I think Jean is on now. But this is very similar to what the library board does and, and it's that they have, um, they have sort of applications for openings before the actual opening might take place. So I, I think this is really sensible. And I think the library board has had a real big success for that because, um, somebody may leave and, and we already have on file those people who might be interested. So I think it's a good plan.
Thanks for sharing that.
That does actually bring up a question for me. Jean or Jim, I saw Jim on the call. Uh, you might be able to answer this. So is it appropriate to include the library board on this forum? If there's a separate, if there's a separate, uh, application process for that, because I know the library board is a little bit different in a statutory way.
I'd love to hear what Jim has to say, but may I just speak in a general advocacy way? Don't exclude, allow all avenues of people who are interested in serving our community. I, I don't think it's redundant in any way, but people would be informed of, of our process if they're interested in the library or when there's opening for trustees as there, as there is now. What are your thoughts? But that's just my philosophical. I don't know if you have a more detailed answer.
I know, I, I agree with that assessment. I think it's fine to, to include the library board on this forum. We do have, as Sid mentioned, we have a specific, a form that, of application form that's more specific that asks specific questions about experience with, um, with education and with libraries in particular. But I, I mean, I guess I see this form as kind of an intake form for, for all of these different committees. And then so if someone were to express interest in the library board through this form, then, um, you know, the, the mayor or, or whoever, um, at, at the city would pass that information on to our board. And then we would reach out to, we, we actually are recruiting for two, um, two board positions right now because we have two board members whose terms are ending. And so, yeah, we, we, we use our own application and, you know, if that, if the city was agreeable to that, we'd continue to do that. But this, this form, you know, is, is a good intake form. Like Jean said, you know, it casts a wide net. Let's, let's people, um, express their interest. So, no, I, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, Ben, Ben is correct. The library board does have specific statutory responsibilities that are a little bit different than other committees. But, um, this, this form doesn't pose any problems for that.
Thank you.
So, so Your Honor, can I make a more, just an amendment to this, uh, this resolution that we have included? So, so your honor, can I make a, just an amendment to this, this resolution that we have included the library board on this particular, the, the library committee assignment on this particular form as well?
Yeah, it's in there. We have it in there, Sid.
Oh, you have it in there already?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So we, I withdraw my motion.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. The next item is an item that we ran, I think we ran this through finance, yes, we did. And we can go about this a couple of different ways. We did do it in open session in finance, but we certainly have the opportunity to go into closed session if there's specifics to the offer that council members would like to discuss. And I guess that would defer to the city attorney if we start crossing that line. But we can, I believe we can start this in open session. Does that sound right, Matt?
Yes, that, that sounds right to me.
So I'll turn this over to Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R17 of 2021 approving the WB15 commercial offer to purchase as amended by counter offer number one for the purchase of lot four of CSM number 15363 located in the city of Stoughton, County of Dane, Wisconsin property. So move.
There's a second? All right, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, again, this is to purchase property out in the, this is the Business Park North, correct?
Correct.
Yep, to, and with a counter offer in there, land purchase. One thing to note is in the resolution header, the CSM number is listed as 15363 and that's correct. On the included counter offer that is in there or the WB15 order to purchase, the CSM number is listed incorrectly and will be corrected before the paperwork is finalized.
Okay, are there any initial questions or comments?
I would have a basic one, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm not familiar with what WB15 represents.
That's the actual offer to purchase state farm.
Oh, okay.
So that's what, so basically what we have here, and I can let Rodney and Matt fill in the blanks, is we have a current business out in the Business Park. They actually operate two businesses. They have a printing house and Madison powder coating. And they would like to purchase the four acre piece of property out in the Business Park North that's literally in their backyard. So it offers them a great opportunity to expand their business. We, we've heard that they recently secured a contract with one of the other businesses out in the Business Park. Thus, the need for an additional building to be put up. So that's kind of the background. I know Rodney and Matt and our attorney Blake George and Jamin and I have been working on putting together of the offer to make sure that we have a land value and a secure guarantee that we discussed earlier on this project. Is there anything else you want to add in Rodney? And then we'll let Matt go through anything.
Yeah, just to clarify, this is not actually within the Business Park North proper, but it's on the south side of Glacier Moraine Drive, which is the purchased land that we acquired a number of years ago to kind of expand the Business Park North. But this operation certainly seems like it's a suitable use within the district. It looks like there is valuation that would meet the requirements that we're anticipating there and more details to come, but certainly it would be nice to see an opportunity for our local business to grow and expand here as well.
Anything you want to add, Attorney Dragney?
I would, but I, I see that Alder Person Borzma had a question, so I'll let him go first.
Go ahead, Alder Person Borzma, sorry, I didn't see you.
Yes, I understand, as I understand, WB15 would be a commercial offer to purchase. There's, there's two ways potentially you do it, because there would be also a possibility of having a vacant land offer to purchase, but I believe this is, I think, I believe the WB15 is commercial, is that correct, Matt?
That is correct. That is what, what, that's how it is entitled. This is the, this is the, the WB15 commercial offer to purchase is what was presented to the city. And I prepared the counter offer to that, that you see in the packet. I'll just briefly summarize what I think the material terms are. So the offer to purchase proposes to purchase the land for $265,800. The counter offer builds certain contingencies in, to the city's obligation to sell. First, the buyer is required to provide to the city a property site plan drawing that would describe the buyer's proposed development of the property. That drawing would have to be a site plan that meets all of the requirements of the city's zoning code for a site plan approval. And this document indicates that the seller, the city, has the authority in its sole discretion to decide whether to approve that site plan or not. As I understand it, one of the reasons that has been included is that Mayor Swadley wants to see how the property is going to be developed and others may want to see that as well to make sure that it looks like it's being used in a way that achieves, say, the best use of this land. Second contingency, it requires there to be a development agreement for the property that would require a couple of things. One, it would require the buyer to develop the property in accordance with that approved site plan. And then second, it would require the, the buyer to guarantee, to provide a tax guarantee or assessed value guarantee that the property would be assessed at not less than $1,600,000 by not later than January 1 of 2022 and continuing through the termination of tax increment district number six. And finally, that guarantee obligation would need to be secured by a letter of credit in an amount that's not less than $430,000. The buyer has indicated by, has indicated a willingness to agree to those terms. Finance Director Friedel can, can speak to the numbers. As I understand it, that level of guarantee, 1.6 million in assessed value is sufficient to allow the city to recover the revenues it needs to address this particular parcel share of the cost of acquiring the land and improving the land that the city has invested in this property. And I believe Finance Director Friedel is satisfied that a $430,000 letter of credit is a reasonable number to secure that guarantee obligation. And so that, those are the, you know, main terms of the agreement that I think, from a substantive standpoint, I would want to fill you in on at this stage.
Thank you for that, Matt. And then the packet here is kind of a view of the site plan. And you can see the proposed building. And my concern was is to make sure that there was room to put the addition on the building, which you can see outlined here in the green. Because I want to make sure they use the full use of the land. Because the original building is going to be 20,000 square feet. It's a four acre lot, so we wanted to make sure they laid it out in a way that allows for expansion. I think they've done that. And then kind of the conceptual plan of what the building would look like is in the packet as well. In my understanding is, is that the, the buyer has already approved the, the counter offer. Jamin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not necessarily unless anybody has any specific questions on the valuation and kind of how we arrived there. I won't bore anybody with it unless they want to be bored with it.
Go ahead, Alder Person Legaki.
I know more, I know more information is coming, but is it anticipated that this is an expansion of their powder coating as I see these mockups? Or is that just exemplary?
It would expand their business, their powder coating business, correct?
Any other questions or comments?
Hearing none. Oh, I, I actually have one, just, just one question if I'm, if I may. Previously, they had, through planning, they had requested a permission to expand their current building, if I'm not mistaken.
You are correct.
So I'm guessing that their business is really going, really going really well, that they are now, and, and I'm guessing that that previous expansion to their current building that would be dropped in anticipation of just building this new structure instead.
Yeah, I'll let Rodney answer that.
Yeah, I think you're correct. Alder Person Caravelo, I believe, that they're gonna at least hold off on their expansion of their current facility and invest in the new facility here. The previous addition was planned kind of as an interim step, as a baby step before building another building. So now they're hoping to just move into this new site all at once.
Yeah, I would add that moving into the new site, you know, makes, that was one way for them to secure the land. Because, you know, quite frankly, we weren't really interested in just selling the land and let them sit on it. We really need the increment. So working with them, we've been able to do that. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, maybe you, you covered this and I spaced it. But there's like one initial building and then a second one further on. With this agreement, is there like a date that the second one has to be built to get up to, you know, the use of the full land or based on their first building, we're going to get enough increment to be, you know, in good financial standing?
I'll let Jean answer the finance part. It would be an addition onto the building that it wouldn't be a separate building, it would be an addition.
Right, I mean, with that, that would actually increase the, you know, the tax base for that.
Right.
So, excuse me, I'll speak to the, to what I can on that. So the, the agreement itself that is in before you tonight requires that they build in accordance with an approved site plan. This isn't, I don't know what we will end up with as the final approved site plan, but it, it looks like it might be simply for the proposed building and not yet include the future addition. So they would be only, only be required to build the, the building that's shown, I, I think. That's my best understanding of what would be required under the agreement. But they would also be required to guarantee the 1.6 million in assessed value. Whether they anticipate being able to do that with that first building, I don't know. Maybe somebody else knows the answer to that.
I think they anticipate being able to meet the valuation requirement on the initial construction. But certainly they'd be subject to the guarantee as outlined.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And anybody opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. I think that's all we had. Is there a second?
Second?
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed. Have a good night.
Good night, thank you all.
Well, everyone. Bye.
Bye.